Good afternoon. Mr. Brennan.
President.
Mr. Rickman.
Here.
Mr. Mc Dowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Brennan.
Mr. Vann.
Here.
Mr. Davis. Mayor Benjamin.
Here.
Mr. Davis is president of the.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Well, Mr. Brennan.
So this is not campus. He's in the hallway.
He's waiting on the.
Way too good to do that.
Hey, I've been here since nine thirty. Wait till six.
All right, uh, first of all. Yeah, um, Mr. Dowell, please.
Thanks, Brennan. Oh, Lord, for the beauty of this day and for all you've done for us. For the ability to arise this morning with health and strength undergirded in us, we ask for your blessings upon each of us as we gather around this table and in this conference room. Bless the city of ours. Be mindful of the needs that are there and yet sensitize us to those needs. We ask you in your name. Amen.
Amen.
It didn't start at the city council discussion. Mr. Mayor, our first item is the adoption of a new city flag. Mr. Lee Snellbro, executive director of Columbia for Arts and Culture, and I'm sure there are people who may want to come in a little bit on this one.
Oh, yeah, let's talk to, if you want, have some time to discuss this individually between now the, um, council and lead. I'm gonna push you out of your comfort zone a little bit.
All right. I have a comfort zone. I don't think I've ever been.
I'll push you into your discomfort zone. How about that?
All right, let's do it.
No, no, just, just, I wanna make sure, you know, a lot of council, you got some consistency, some unity, some, um, designs that have, well, these are, no, no, no one actually, none of the guys here will put up a majority of support. Um, what I specifically want you to make sure you speak to is the design lead and maybe some of the input they've given you. And I'm gonna try to say vexilological, is that the right way?
Yes.
Yeah, vexilological principles, just making sure we're hearing what those principles are like and, and we're all, um, big boys and we're limited here. We don't, we, we don't mind having your frank input as, as to, as of what we're gonna do for making a decision for austerity.
How, every one of these things talks about the public.
Yeah.
I think it'd be important because.
Yeah, sure, rehash all the public input.
Well, how, how the public input was brought in, because there's some people who don't realize their view about the process, but there, it's been a long process.
Oh, a very, a very long process. So maybe, I think of those, I think repetition is probably key to these types of, uh, big decisions. Making sure people understood, understand the entire process from then here. Thank you.
Okay, and I will try and recap that from memory because I didn't, I didn't bring enough notes on that, but, um, that was on the previous.
This is my time?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. Um, look at this. At hand. Um, okay, so.
One day the retailer comes in really handy. He can dish it out too. He got me pretty good this morning, so.
Fair enough. Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the designs that you all identified from the previous presentation, these were premises. And we'll talk about the groups of designs or each one, and I'll kinda give you the best I can of, I wanna be very objective if I can, and, uh, talk about, yes, the public input and the professional input, both the vexilologists and the design lead professionals that are involved in the process. Um, as, as we discussed last time, you know, when we started on this process, we, we opened the call for public input, we received five hundred and forty-four designs. So I showed those last time in a quick video. We sent that off to the, uh, professional vexilologists and they identified a top eighteen and then that, um, became what was submitted to the public, the public provided input on it, all of it. And we received seven thousand entries, and that's comments on each design. So the public provided their input on each design and a sort of number ranking. We didn't ask them to select one, we actually asked them to weigh in on all of these. So when I talk about the public input, I am, may not be talking about the public input directly on the designs you have in your packet, but similar designs, because this second round of designs was provided by the designers of the top designs from the last process, so essentially their work was reviewed. Many of them, because they were in the top, utilized those designs and just retweet them to meet the guidelines that you provided them. So I can, I can sort of speak from the public's input because of that, because we do at least have their comments, we have their rankings, we know what was, uh, what they were sort of responding to, what they weren't responding to well. And I think that shows in here, and I tried to capture that in what I provided you in those notes, and I'm gonna talk about that. Uh, so, um, so where we're at now, we, we are essentially, after you all, um, discussing, there were fourteen designs that kinda rose to the top from your, your recognitions, and I, I've listed on the document you have about whose preferred one, who, who listed that one as a preferred. Um, I do have my copy of Good, Bad Flag, so I can refer to it at any point if you have questions. Um, all right, so we'll start off with, essentially, I've got the first three, uh, which I think we can talk about as a group. So one, two, and three are all very similar, you can see that, they're all from the same designer, obviously. Um, and, and essentially, this one was well-received by the public professionals and the jury members. Um, I think that what we do know, though, is that the public wasn't entirely keen on the use of a crescent as a reference to Columbia. Even though it works well on the South Carolina flag in context with the palmetto tree, many people did not respond to it well, and it sort of stood alone without the palmetto tree. Um, so typically, you know, there was discussion, I know, among the jury about changing similar designs to this one, uh, to a star, and, and perhaps that could be discussed. But I think that overall, people like this design for the reference to Three Rivers and the wing. I do think there are issues with how this shape might be used off the flag and other instances and other references to the city because of the length of the lines and trying to get that balance right and get the weight of the lines right. And I think that still applies to this version, which sort of standardizes them all the way across, and this version, um, which has even more sort of difference in balance between all those lines. Um, and, and simply looks, I mean, to be honest, I think, you know, lacks some sort of breadth of the capital city that might be, but I do, I think, most of the professionals would say that this, this does meet the simplicity guidelines, um, for, you know, it's good flag track, you know, it's.
Does, does this.
Does, does. Yeah, it's obviously very simple, two colors, three lines, um, and I think you get the, the wing for sure in that design. Um, okay, so then we'll go on to the next set here, and stop me if you have questions along the way, or I can just go back to them at the end. Um, this one and this one were provided, obviously, by the same designer, um, and, uh, while I think this, this certainly meets the simplicity criteria, um, one issue, I think, for this flag, and, and the shape is interesting, but I think that the, the problem is it's a white flag, and that can sometimes be hard to see on a pole. When this flag might be hanging limp, you're not gonna recognize those three lines, and it could be hard to identify as a Columbia flag.
Most flags in this design limp, you're not gonna be able to see either.
True. And enough, well, I, I mean, I think there are certain elements, right? If you can capture some of the color or some of the, the star or something like that, it'll be pretty quickly recognizable. South Carolina flag, not always recognizable when it's flying limp, but, but generally, you know, in context, it will be.
Lee, just out of curiosity, you spent a lot of time, something I brought up before, but nobody really answered, was, is how come none of the designs incorporated the light blue color? It seems to have been kind of, was it for the same reason? I mean, no, like predominant, there's a little bit in there, but not, you know.
That's my first question.
Yeah, some, some, I, I think that, um, there were some responses that came from that, people alluding back to it. Part of the problem is people don't really know our current flag well, and I think there's actually even a disagreement between whether it should be light blue or dark blue. The original design was dark blue.
It was dark blue.
Uh, if you look back on all the documents of what was, you know, adopted by, over a hundred years ago, like, what was adopted? It was a, it was a dark blue field, and somewhere along the way, it changed to light blue, and not really an explanation why. So, uh, there may not be that allegiance to that light blue. Light blue flags do fade, and I'll talk about that in some of the designs later. Um, you know, in the, in the sun, that can turn to white, and I've seen that of our current flag, uh, on the, front of the police department at one time years ago, when we first started this process, they were flying one, it just got faded, and it was pretty white. And so then you lose that one, it's a full light blue flag.
In this whole process, to throw a kind of a monkey wrench, but what if we liked a design like that, but did, but changed the colors?
So I think we've taken the tactic of, you know, we've got the designs submitted, but I'll talk a little bit about how we might work with a designer to make some alterations that could fit, if you were really strongly preferring a certain design, um, that we could adjust it. Most of these designers, I have, I have a sense from them, they will be comfortable with some changes, uh, depending upon as long as they don't lose the core concept of their design. But I, I think there are ways that we can make some slight tweaks, some, most of these to improve them as flags, and we can discuss that. So, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, please.
There you go. If you would, uh, go back to number one, please. Yeah. The movement with the, the idea with the crescent being there, what are the, let me ask you, what, what were the subliminal messages? Or were there subliminal messages that were looking at the crescent as perhaps being a part of the state, been a part of the flag?
Um, I mean, I, I think that some persons, general public may have seen, uh, the connection that some flags of Islamic nations, particularly Turkey, might have on their flag, but I, you know, that, it's sort of irrelevant because we know for sure it is a crescent tied to the South Carolina flag. So it's odd that people were making that immediate connection. So like the red crescent, the service organization equivalent to the Red Cross, but I, I don't, there were a few citations of that, but I don't think that was the predominant view. I think that just people maybe didn't make the connection to the South Carolina flag as it's, when it's a standalone crescent. Because often, there's already the misnomer that that is a moon, and it is not a moon, it is from the shape of the gorge of the revolutionary soldiers that represented South Carolina. It's not necessarily a crescent moon.
Was it a large percentage of those persons in that listening, hearing session that objected to that?
Uh, I, I don't know if I would say a large, um, section, but I, I don't have the numbers to sort of quantify that. But I think that there was that sense that just as a standalone item, the crescent alone did not represent the capital.
Yeah.
There were connections up there.
Number five, man?
Okay. Um, number five, uh, I think the, the only thing I, I know for sure about this one, I think that one thing that would need to be addressed is there's a little complexity to that sign in terms, there are actually two colors, you may not be able to see here, and some simplification of that, you might be able to see it in the printout, depending upon the quality of the printer. But I, there are some variants there that wouldn't work on a flag because of the same reasons, it doesn't really work on the printout or on the screen right now. Um, but, uh, overall, meets the, all of, pretty much all these designs meet the flag guidelines within range. Um, simplicity, I think, is the one that might get some, um, play once in a while, but, uh, the, the thing that was, I think, the public responded to when this similar three-line pattern and sort of chevron shape was used, that it referenced the military, or whatever that may mean, we are connected to the military, but that, um, that shape reminded people of a militaristic flag. Um, so just to make note of that. Uh, I do think that also there is a good correlation of this design to, um, the Milwaukee flag, which is the People's Flag of Milwaukee, I think, I'm not sure if their council has adopted their flag, but it's been wide use, and it has a similar sign coming above three lines, um, and a slightly different color pattern, but, uh, similar in shape and design. Okay. Uh, so those were about another designer. We're now on the third designer's set. Um, this was very similar to a design that was in the first round, um, and, uh, while I think certainly the phoenix refers to Columbia, we rose from the ashes and such in the Columbia Phoenix, uh, paper, uh, there was some concern by the public about referring back to that event, a negative event for the city on a flag that we hope will be facing future and represent us going forward. Um, also, for, you know, reference, the city of Phoenix, um, their flag is, you may not be able to see it well, but it's purple with a phoenix right slap in the middle of it.
I think it's Phoenix University.
Fair enough. Um, the professionals really weighed in on this, uh, shape of this crescent inside the star.
That is quite good.
Oh, really? Uh, so the, the professional really certainly honed in on the idea that this crescent within the star, because certainly, that clearly, on its own, without much interpretation, really showcases Columbia as the capital of South Carolina. So they responded highly to that, that's the vexilologists. It is a complex shape fairly much in terms of getting the, the stars correct. Obviously, tacking on wings makes it a little bit more complex. Um, the lines on the edge, um, probably need more contrast in this case, because as you can see, it's not very definitive on the screen here, uh, so we wanna add, help the contrast in terms of what gets put on a flag.
Isn't, isn't a child supposed to be able to do it from there?
Yeah, within reason, I mean, you know, there are exceptions to that rule, South Africa, uh, the United States, in some cases, not every child draws out all the stars. Um, but if they can get the general gist of the idea of a flag, simplicity helps with that, yes. Um, obviously, similar complex shape of the star or the wings, um, but one thing that was clearly told to me by Ted K, who wrote Good Flag, Bad Flag, wavy lines on flags are sort of irrelevant because flags already wave, so any straight line on a flag is going to look wavy, so you don't need to have a wavy flag, a wavy line, because it's, it's just adding to the, to the mix of the wavy line. Um, this one does try and tie into the current city flag by providing Lady Justice on it. Uh, obviously, that then creates a fairly complex shape of the wings. Um, and it, it does reference our current flag and the city seal, which, uh, you know, I think that one, this may be a judgment, but one thing that I think our current flag suffers from is its direct connection to the city government and not the people of the city, and, and how it seems like, oh, that's just for the government, that I'm not gonna fly that because it references something above me. And we're, I think we are, if I understand correctly, we're all looking for a flag that really represents us as Colombians, as people, so that they can fly it without referring to the government all the time. Um, similar, star, wings, um, blue field, light blue reference, um, that Councilman Rickman referenced. Uh, I think contrast issues perhaps between the wings themselves and the light blue.
That's very Air Force looking.
Perhaps.
I would, I would draw my support for number ten.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else wants to show the same profile of these shares, please?
Um, this one, um, uh, so it does meet the flag guidelines, obviously. Uh, there's probably not enough contrast between the yellow star and the white field, uh, and that would need to be addressed. Uh, light blue at the bottom would fade quickly and sort of blend to the, um, the white in the middle. Um, so we're now in this last section, there are three fairly similar designs with slight differences between each of them. One thing I'll say about these designs, uh, I noticed at the State of the City, the Councilman at the bottom was wearing a dress that had exactly.
I did, I did, I noticed that too. I'm not sure she realized it.
Which was very exciting, that she was, she was already wearing the city, potential city flag, perhaps. Uh, again, with the crescent, we've already, yes, uh, I think, you know, just one sort of caveat to this one.
You just got her book, right?
I'm here to persuade. Uh, so, uh, you know, I think there was a lot of discussion in the jury level, the professional level, uh, about the, uh, having a sort of white bottom corner that, you know, that gets a little lost in the mix on a, a gray sky or something, that it'll make that flag look a, a strange shape, not a rectangular shape. Um, and this one, um, we have the star incorporated here. Um, uh, I think the designer notes that, um, you know, the, the six points are a nod to the State House, um, as a symbol of resilience for the city. Um, you know, I, I don't think any designer is gonna be completely caught up in the number of star, the number of points on the stars, so that's, you know, I think up for discussion. Certainly.
For the reference that again, six, the six stars on the same.
Yeah, as a symbol of resilience.
Sherman.
Correct. Um, you know, traditional capital city star on a map is gonna be five stars. Um, but then I think there's also, um, you could make a case, uh, that, you know, a six-pointed star refers to cardinal directions, perhaps, or something like that. I guess that would be an eight. Um, uh, but similar shape, uh, just in this one instance, there's sort of the, um, additional blue, lower blue corner. Um, and then the final one is, uh, this one, which I think, um, there, there are a few issues with this, but I think overall, there's, there's a nice, um, structure to this middle shade that I think could be applied in a lot of different instances. Traditionally, the star would not be in the lower right-hand corner, and I think there are fading issues, uh, with, between the sort of three colors here, um, that if, if it fades, you might lose some context to that shape. Um, I think there is an opportunity for, as we've sort of discussed all along with any of these, and I'm gonna give you an example of how we might make minor tweaks with the designer's input through the process, uh, to improve it. One suggestion would be, um, I'm gonna go to this one first, um, this was supposed to be the other, but, um, so you'll see the connection to the one, but we've, we've sort of just put in some contrasting lines to give that shape some definition, and if it were to fade, it would allow that shape to keep retained its shape and it wouldn't blend.
Can you go back a little?
I, I will. So this is sort of just a tweak of what was, uh, submitted to us, um, with this contrast between the shape, which I think already you'll sort of see, there's distinction between three referencing and Three Rivers, and this shape perhaps could stand alone. Um, the design lead, when reviewing your preferences, um, there was some, someone suggested, well, what if we flip it over, and I think this is what happens when you flip it over, and there's some interesting element here, this is much more of a wing reference, I think, and the star is in much more traditional place. It has the contrast to it. So just to show you, I'm just, I'm mostly just showing this as, as suggestions that some of these could take in terms of, if there are issues that I've brought up, they could be improved if you were, uh, but with the designer's input, we certainly want to make sure that it's not, wait in. And, and I'll say in this instance, just so, so we could display this, we communicated with the designer on this option, so.
Is that the option that the design lead thinks for the best city?
Um, I, I do think so, yes, sir. Uh, it was discussed in the design lead, put forth, you know, a bunch, roomful of design professionals certainly had, uh, opinions about the design. Out of these designs, as I presented them, mostly like I've just presented you, uh, this one rose to the top, and then this suggested alteration came to the top, put it on the board.
Those would be navy blue lines between the white, the light blue, and the darker blue?
Yes, sir. I do think it might be worth, um, just a minor alteration to discuss how that, um, shape closes itself out at the top right, but that's minor. Um, I think the general idea is there that the shape would be the wing shape, but I think that, I can imagine, um, that shape being used in a lot of instances, um, on its own, without the star, without the rectangular flag, that that shape could, uh, become sort of more iconic for Columbia. Uh, it shows forward progression, it shows a wing, it shows the Three Rivers, uh, which is all the things we use to identify ourselves.
Okay.
One.
And so the, because of the navy blue lines, if it fades, it won't lose the.
I don't like that.
You don't like that?
I don't like that at all.
What is your taste?
What's, what's the pattern? Are we about to caucus? What's going on here? Are we? That's a bad word. I think, I think we, we have to talk to each other. Yeah, we can talk, we can speak out loud and share some thoughts right now. Perfect. So, I, you know, I've been paying attention for this. Lee, thanks for all the hard work, and Congress for all the hard work for a couple, two, three years it's been going on, and, um, if you saw my, my yard signs in my campaign, you saw the blue and yellow. So I like the blue and yellow. I specifically like number three. Gives, uh, I want it to stay flagged with gold for the, for the tribute to the original flags. The Three Rivers, I love, the Three Rivers being involved in the flag. And then the, the wing rising up from the ashes, it's simple, um, but I think, uh, it is, is very sharp, so that's kind of my, my thought process to, to behind why I like number three.
I like four, and I like four if we change the colors to the, to the yellow and gold, 'cause I think that really distinks the Three Rivers. I think the write-up, if you read the write-up in here, that's what captured me too, was the come together collectively and form a broader shape, the wing captures the diversity of Columbia, the character and strength of Columbia, stems from diverse groups coming together, which is, I think, what we've all been working for, for a long time, and I think that really is a transition away from what some of the connotations are on the old flags. So from a color standpoint, if you could change the colors, I think that represents our city with stronger, in my opinion.
I, well, it's got to be individual input. I, um, I was sorry about the revised version that we presented at fourteen, um, and also secondary, um, three. Um, my, my, that, that will, um, just mentioned as well, I do, I do feel like the narratives articulated almost applied, almost all the flags with the detection of a few outliers that we didn't have to, um, but, you know, we, we wanted, working around, uh, the wings like Senator Day's quote, uh, the wings of Columbia, of course, the narratives between future and flying, rising from the ashes, everything else, you know, there's a whole lot there, and the, uh, the wings that also contemplated rivers, they're fantastic. I always liked simplicity of the, the three. Uh, I, I like, I like having some reference to the Capitol. I wonder if it might be worked well, I was going through, and, um, well, us, work well, maybe we can just take out some of the ones that, that we don't want first, might, might be easy to eliminate some, uh, if y'all have come through some of that.
Lee, on number three, could, two things. Number one, could we put a star, a six-pointed star to represent, to start us on the State House?
Uh, I don't have words from the designer about that. I, I would imagine, since they've submitted one in the press, and then perhaps they do have the discussion about it.
And, and, uh, why, what was the significance of mine having, like, go, rivers go all the way to the border?
Well, they do that in the one previous it, um, and I think it's, the reason they're not doing it on that one is because they're using that sort of flared shade for the wing.
The devil mean?
A wind, yeah.
It's to get more of a wing.
Okay.
Everybody.
I'd, I'd like three with a star.
It says curse, right? Yeah. So, uh, obviously, Mr. Dowell, okay if you remove number one?
Yes, I was gonna say, I was wrong, number one.
Mr. Dowell, you put number two, you might take that one out of contention?
I will give up number two in support of number three with a star.
Can we, um, can we take out the, of, uh, keep in support of the fact that they restart here? We take the more militaristic one, so it's like the people's flag, Milwaukee, that's number five, remove that one from contention?
Five, six, seven.
Five, six, and seven?
Eight.
Which one, which one you want to leave in there?
Seven.
Seven, all right, everyone's leave seven, it's a share. Uh, let's, let's take six out.
You got the heat down.
Seven.
I think you moved six.
Take it out. All right, uh, we're gonna take out six, not seven, we're taking eight out, is that correct, Mr. Dowell? Is that right, Mr. Dowell?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And we're, and we're gonna, people's flag on the government flag, so we're taking out number nine. Fair? We still have the city seals representing Lady Justice. All right? Dowell, uh, I'm sorry, it's, it was eight. Uh, Dowell, let's take nine out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Take my, 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 my number ten out. All right? Uh, Mr. Davis, we said about eleven.
Eleven, real?
Give it up, give it up.
All right. Got it. So eleven, right there. So we'll take twelve, thirteen, and we'll have versions of fourteen, we'll take out twelve and thirteen, we'll have the, the, the versions of fourteen, um, still in the mix, so these are, fourteen, three, four, seven. All right, is that right?
I think I have an alternate three, is that right? One, that alternate.
Alternate three.
Alternate four, gee.
Four, I'm sorry, seven. Yeah.
Oh.
What's your?
The alternate four is what, the color?
Different color. Who was your recommendation coming in?
Uh, the, the blue and gold.
What?
Navy flag with the gold, um, I thought.
So like this, but the wavy one?
Yes. Yes. Like three, though, the way he's, is, to make this any descriptively, draw four.
Art is leading. When art meets the political process.
Hey, art is in the eye of the beholder, so we all have a different way we look at it.
And this is a reminder. At that point, I said this way, certainly, you know, you're trying to find a flag that
will hold meaning for many people for a long time. It will not come with me, you know? Many people won't necessarily identify with this immediately. But as it's used, and as it's displayed, and as it's thought about, it will, it will fall, you know, people will become more connected with it. It is not some flags, just, they have to last a while, and they have to hold that meaning for a very long time. So it's hard for people to immediately sort of take it on, even really good design flags. I can imagine, you know, like, if we were sitting around a room trying to judge the American flag, we might have opinions about it being too complex, or having too many lines, or something like that, so. But we all use it in so many ways now, because it's got such tradition to it, and it will take time to develop that tradition.
I guess, again, in the interest of posterity, I'm very proud of this process. Lee, engaging, inclusive it's been, patient everyone's been, because while some people might not even see this as being a big, a major exercise, as the three hundred sixty-five days of the year just kind of go on, it is something that speaks to the spirit of the city, and speaking to the ideas of inclusion and growth of the city, and how we were not the city that we wanted to be then, but how we may not still be there, but we want to be there, and that we're pledging to work together, capitalizing on the riches and vitality of the rivers, proud of the fact that we are state capital. I just think it's a process that's been the type of process you want to see, even though it's taking longer than you want. Thank you for the artists who share their views, and Design League and some of the others giving us critical analysis, and actually showing the ability to change the position where people like me and others may have the rest of the process and ask for more. And I just think it's been a process to be proud of. And now we've got to make some decisions. We're down to four, or variation of four, and we can have some more discussion around it right now, because it's important to get done, and if not, we'll have time between now and this evening to discuss it some more.
Was Mr. Mayor Benjamin and Councilman Brennan accept number three alternate with the star? So we've got three in support of that?
We're going to talk to White Lady, right?
Well, first of all, how are we going to vote on something that he doesn't have permission to change?
That's right.
Well, he's, they all agree to...
I think it would be, I mean, you know, it's important, I think, for the Design League, that the designer has a voice in the process, and make sure that they feel comfortable. Because of, you know, the discussion about changes, I think we ought to at least be able to run by them.
And that's his freedom, as it might sound, how I appreciate the offer. If we're going to three, I love three, it is, how much I, how much I change it. I know it seems so simple, but I think, I think it's brilliance in the simplicity, and that, that might not make sense, but I think it is.
Well, the star is a symbol of this capital city.
The capital, yeah, I was wondering about that. I mean, three doesn't stand out to me, but if with the star, or somehow does make the capital city.
Put a star and a chrysalis.
No, that would be too much.
Put a star in a chrysalis.
Was that a tree, Dave?
Does this remind you of the Iowa caucus?
It's democracy in action. That's all right. It's not always, not always beautiful, but it's glad. That's what I think.
Continue to narrow down, and I know you said you wanted to keep seven, but according to the guidelines, seven is not really simplistic. It's a lot of stuff.
Real busy. We're going to pick all that.
It's real busy. It's a creative vibe, see? People, is it?
You feel the beauty, and I can just tell. You're like, woo, look at it.
Feel that creative juice.
Lee, watch out, Dan's coming after your job, he's feeling the creativity.
That's the thing, that's the... Let me, please. I hear you, by the way. Yeah, I, it's only the original for me, first flag, yeah, current flag? No, no.
Delayed reaction, okay.
I was headed in that direction anyway, but the favors right now represent, I think, the initial intent that was to come up with something that's one, unique, different, and for the purpose of representing Columbia, of what we stand for. And I think you've noticed that my first selection there, coming up from the Venus, that's, you know, that's fine, but the only problem with that would be that as you rise, you still stand above what was there, where you're coming from. And then the final selection really represents uniqueness and shows the evolution of design in general, going back to reflect, I think, right now, with the majority, things really represent them. Nothing is circular. Nothing is circular, which is traditional, it's all abstract to some extent. When I took art classes way back, I thought abstract was anything.
You knew you was doing real fieldwork.
But that's okay.
With crayons, man.
You're worth it, what you got. But my point is, though, and honestly, when you look at flags today around the world, it does not represent a lot of traditional shapes and figures, and this one doesn't. So I think it's, it's saying a lot about us and wanting to come up with an original stamp that represents the entire city versus city government.
I like that.
What I would do, and I'd like to have some further conversation with Lee, I'd pull number seven, but if we want to have some conversation with you about three and seven.
This dude cannot get his own flag. We'll cut that conversation off very quickly.
It's got his own way of putting out a flag.
So are we down to fourteen being the alternate one, fourteen?
Yes. I can do that, so that's the design.
I can live with that.
I can live with that, yeah. All right? Keep McDowell away from the board from the board. All ready to go? Yeah, I see. Yeah, I'm, yeah. That's, that's the open, yeah.
I think there's a consensus.
There's a consensus, Mr. Devall?
That's the one that they don't have to look at them like that.
I'm not voting for that one. I mean, I'll just be honest, I don't, I don't think it's right at all.
So we down to two, number three and fourteen eight? Is that the way I'm reading that? If we can't, do we have to go back to the designer to get a redesign of four?
It would be worth having a conversation. I know I could give a whole redesign from that, but I can talk to him.
Please don't steal my mind.
Wait for stubbornness.
Lee, whatever you decide, I agree with Lee on some of the narrative, like I, like if we did more scenes, top one, and I like the narrative description there, but it doesn't talk about, you know, the, like, three, you know, three comes out in this town, which you know, has to...
The quote, yeah, and we provided that to all the designers in the second round as one of the references for why we were asking them for a wing shape, and so they may not have included in their description, because they felt like they were already designed. But certainly, I agree.
I'll let this, I'll let this say, history as we lay out, and I don't know if these are particularly, kind of, good for the process, so, so our process, so you can say it wasn't like the ministry did, did the, so, all right, so we're down...
Three and fourteen eight. Fourteen and...
No, I think McDowell wants four.
I like four. But I might be the only one.
You may be. I'm going to pay it, I'm going to pay it.
On the Dowell way?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see, what do you put up there?
As McDowell adds a few meetings, he goes, egg out of there, he...
He didn't know what I did. For his birthday? I had a sign, and he put it on sport. It's a bad way.
He came through and said, man, you're going to change the name of this street.
All right, so the asterisk, Mr. Regan, is the holding up number four.
One note, it's been pointed out that Councilman McDowell sucks at these couple of...
What you looking at my feet for, man?
Did you have that speech?
The lady's a bar about six.
Didn't do that way in socks, did you?
I appreciate that presentation.
Three and fourteen, alternate.
Yeah. Fine with the representation. We don't, we don't think of...
I like fourteen eight.
Oh, yeah, but, that's, looks like a compromise right now. So I'm just going down, and this evening.
Thank you for checking it out.
I'll just get mine retired.
People have vacations.
You know, as we said, we've already engaged, it's only fourteen, I'm down for a month, but I can go for three and four, just to confirm.
All right. Thank you, Lee.
I don't think, yeah, there, there's only one person by four, that's me.
I'll still get you an answer.
Okay, Mr. McDavid.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next item is the Columbia Compass Comprehensive Plan Update. Several wonderful planning staff members here, Mrs. D. Ford, planning and public services comprehensive planner, Mr. John Fellows, planning and public services director, Minister Jonathan Gai, Chairman Moore, Vice President, and Miss Lee Anne King, Clarion Associates.
That leaves out all of the Lees coming to the field. So, hopefully, our long-term engagement is contentious, but similar themes, public engagement, right? So, thank y'all for giving us the opportunities, deep reviews this afternoon, and I'm going to try and be as fast as I can, because we did have that to consultants to the best we can speak, and a little bit more detail about housing and transportation sections as well. So, just to start off, you guys have seen the slide and variations over the course of the process, but just a reminder, public engagement has been critical throughout any process. We've really worked hard to gather input, we think we have about sixty-two hundred points of engagement, and that includes face-to-face, online, and a lot of mailers are not included in that number, but we've really, we've tested out a lot of new points of public engagement throughout this process, and we're excited about it, and excited about the feedback we've received. I wanted to just briefly overview each of the nine elements of the comprehensive plan, so just wanted to give you a slide about each, and then we'll turn it over. So the population element is really the analytical backbone of the plan, so this looks at existing demographic trends and anticipated shifts in needs and desires, so it really helps us predict some of those needs going forward. The natural resources chapter also takes a look at existing conditions, and it makes recommendations for programs, policies, and partnerships that help us move forward some of those commitments that council has made, like being ready for one-hundred percent clean renewable energy and being prepared for natural hazards. The economic development section looks at information about Midland's workforce and our employers, and it also makes recommendations regarding cities and regions' economic development efforts. The housing chapter, which Lee and King will talk about in further detail, does also include a market and policy analysis, and a number of recommendations. And the transportation section, which Jonathan Gai is here to talk about today, also looks at trends, it incorporates walk-by Columbia recommendations, and sets forth the policy and infrastructure recommendations as well. The land use chapter, you guys are pretty familiar with, we've done a pretty substantial update to the land use chapter in 2013, so we carried a lot of that forward, but we also are making some recommended changes to some of the future land use maps, and there are a handful of recommendations, and they're about other land use issues such as greenway development. The community facilities chapter is a little bit of a catch-all, so this chapter really talks about not only our buildings, but how we operate as a city from the services and programs we provide, makes recommendations about those. And the cultural resources chapter, Lee was here, Lee was also involved on that, but the cultural resources chapter is like the partnership with Amplify, the Amplify process that y'all have been engaged on, taking forward some of those recommendations, as well as some recommendations and existing conditions regarding Columbia's cultural identity and sort of preservation of those sorts of things. And just a brief overview, hopefully y'all have had a chance to kind of dig into the plan as we've got it posted, and we'll be coming back to you certainly in the near future. But the meat of the plan, each of those elements are chapters within the plan, and the meat of those chapters is the recommendations of the plan. So each of the recommendations, we identify the elements on the screen that you see before you, and a number of the recommendations that we've made, we've also tried to identify case studies for, so best practices for moving those implementations forward, whether they're things that we're already doing in our community that we can do on a larger scale, or if they're things that we're doing in other communities. And then the priority investment chapter is a little bit different. This element summarizes all of the recommendations we've made throughout the planning process, and it does have one recommendation I was saying, and that recommendation is to come back to y'all with an annual report. So we really want to make sure that we're reporting back to you on the successes and potentially the failures of the planning process, so that we can continue to keep, you guys engaged, continue to keep, not just y'all, but the public engaged, because we know that our planning processes are most successful when we really have the partnerships to bring these things forward. Just a brief overview of our next steps, we had some great public meetings in January, we had about a hundred and thirty people over the course of four meetings, which was great for us, really good discussions throughout this public meeting. We're taking public comments on the draft plan through February seventh, so if you know anyone that's been itching to get their comments to us, just remind them that's this Friday. And the reason we're setting that timeline is we really want to make sure that we can get those back out and edited, and that draft out and edited, to hit Planning Commission in March. Planning Commission has been very involved in the process, we've talked to them about each of the chapters, we've reviewed all the drafts, we've been having kind of ongoing discussions with them about the public feedback to receive back, and they are, of course, charged with making a recommendation to y'all on the adoption of the plan. At that point, we would hope to move it forward to meetings.
Lee, is there any areas of the city that you had any less participation in the comments? Because I know you've had several around the city, but is there, is there a particular area where you need to, between now and Thursday, Thursday night is the last one?
Uh, Friday.
Friday, okay. But there's one Thursday night.
Oh, no, we don't have any meetings, except Friday is the end for the comments, so our meetings grow.
So we can encourage that input from, if there's a particular area that has not really been met at all?
That's a great question. I mean, it's difficult with the, with the physical meetings, sometimes folks don't provide us with their, with their zip codes, or what areas are from. These last four meetings, we met kind of in quadrants throughout the city, and we saw good participation at each of those. Early on, when we were doing some of our interactive online surveys, we did try and track that participation by zip code. We had pretty good, probably, participation throughout, our best participation was in the two-nine-two-one and two-nine-two-two-five zip codes. But we, what we did is then we took that data... But we, what we did is then we took that data, as the surveys were still open, and we used that to boost Facebook posts and the, and the other areas and that sort of thing. So we, we hope we've gotten a pretty good framework. I mean, I would say, I was pleasantly surprised when we were at Richland Library South East all the way down Burness Ferry, or we are Richland-St. Andrews, Broad River Road, and we had thirty people show up to a meeting, which is, which is good for us. So, um, so I'd like to think that we've, we've done a good job of that throughout this process, but that doesn't mean that, um, you know, we'll, we'll still probably have folks to say, oh, I hadn't heard about this, but, um, we hope we, we appreciate that.
Do you have questions, Sam? We put together milestones, if you know, for, uh, the, the, the group plan eventually, as to what we've done, one year, two years, five years down the road, are y'all gonna recommend that?
Yeah, so that's part of the reporting and actually part of the priority investment element as well. So the priority investment element, what we've done, um, is set forth kind of a short, medium, or long-term priority for each recommendation. So the short would be, we would do it within the first one to three years, medium would be four to six, long would be seven to ten plus. Um, and the reason we've, we've done that, and we've kind of gotten fixed feedback on that as well, and we've also gotten feedback from different departments on that, is that, um, that'll give us an idea of kind of where we think our abilities are and our priorities are. We might of course see the shift, so when we talk about the annual reporting being, being important, we know that, you know, there may come an opportunity where there's grant funding that can move a priority forward, or we might see a shifting, you know, funding stream that would, would slow a priority as well. So, so our goal is that we would give that to you in the priority investment section, and it, they would also be reflected in each of the recommendations, but then also that we know that those things may, may shift a little bit as we move forward. So, just a reminder, the Amplify Columbia process is also kind of reaching its culmination, so they will be scheduling kind of a celebration, a public meeting in the near future, and then we'd like to bring that to you all as a final presentation as well. And just, I wanted to kind of close with, one of the reasons that, um, we've really tried to make this as accessible as possible and as, as full of public engagement as possible, is we want Columbia to come back to be a tool, not just for you guys, not just for staff, but also for the citizens. So we want folks to stay engaged, we want people to be able to, um, help move it forward, because we recognize that those partnerships are, are gonna be critical. We've also really tried to dovetail the process with the envisioned Columbia focus areas and vision statements, so we've really focused on how we can bring them back to, to help you all move forward, the priorities you've set for the city. Um, and, and we hope that that, along with the annual reporting we provide to y'all with, will be helpful in moving this forward.
Now, the identified areas that you all have already been in, it's two-nine-two-three, five, one?
Well, so we.
Two-nine-two-one.
We, it's met throughout the city, because it is, is the comprehensive plan, but we, um, when we had the surveys that we had the highest participation in two-nine-two-one and two-nine-two-five, and I can't think of the numbers, but the second survey off the top of my head right now, but I, I wanna say, just because we had four hundred people take a survey in one zip code, it didn't mean that we only had two in the other, it was more like we had two to three hundred in the other, but those were kind of our pukes. Um, we had about eighteen hundred folks take the second survey, so it was pretty good participation for us.
Procedural, so Friday's the cutoff of the comments. Then, what's the timeframe from there of you having those comments and we kind of get a draft? Because I was reading over it last night, and there were several items in there, that at the appropriate time, I think we ought to talk about the wording of, um, that would really enhance it, I think, to make it a better product and, and, you know. So I guess I'm trying to understand from your folks' timeframe, when the appropriate time is to, to provide you some of the input based on?
I would say now, if you're ready.
Okay.
Um, or, you know, in the, in the days to come, I know, for example, when we met with you, you provided some comments about showing that short-term and like.
Like, so we, we're incorporating that in the revisions, but we will post those all at once, um, in advance of, of Planning Commission.
So we ideally like to incorporate all of those comments before we post in advance of Planning Commission and, um.
What is that date, March?
It's March second, but logistically for our.
So we send something between now and Monday to that?
That would be.
When I was just take the document, just write a couple notes on it, like, there are little things, we had this discussion the other day about economic development, you know, meaning, you know, we, we are a pretty good recession-proof community, and that, that's not in there. And the economic, I think it's, it's those type of things that I think enhance the documents that y'all work on.
Sure, yeah, that would be great, and some of those things, for example, if it's not in the main factor, because we, for something like that, that might be more of an existing condition, we could delve into it a little bit more deeply in the dependencies for the existing conditions, because we're trying to provide that kind of short snapshot and so on. But that would, that would be great, um, because once, once we have it, we'll be, um, kind of working furiously to get those comments in, and then we need to actually get them back to, um, our traffic design team to be able to package them in the books, so all my page numbers are right, that sort of thing.
Monday would be.
Um, I, I think Monday would be lovely, um, I, we, you know.
Monday.
Um, you know, and that, and that's not to say we can't, you know, if something comes up and we ask you to, but I think if it's something we can address now, we'd rather address it now.
Some of the comments, we, we were working on something yesterday and getting comments from other professionals that we're looking at, hey, if you're, if you're using this, why not really use these enhancements that really reflect? So I think there's just a couple spots I noticed last night when I was reading through it, that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree. And we, um, and we are, you know, probably the next question is have we gotten any comments from the public yet? We, we have, so we've gotten a lot. Well, I, well, I mean, I guess, just on the draft itself, so we, we got some great feedback about the public meeting, um, and you can actually see what they provided, because we posted the little posters where they said they're seeking that stuff there. But we also, um, have gotten some comments in the interim, like, folks have sent emails and said, you know, it would be great to include this, that sort of thing, so we're already starting to work in those comments we've received. So, um, a lot of the comments are a little bit broader, like, you know, we, we're really excited about this recommendation, and we think this is great, but we're getting a few that are a little bit informative that we can find.
Lee, I will share, one comment I got, uh, got to more than once, is that, um, a lot of times what we produce is, is more, you know, governmental language, and they said it's very easy to read, it's very comprehensive, so. I think that we've done a good job of making sure that no matter who it is can read it and backdefect it and understand, and it's not like.
That's, that's good to hear. We don't always do a good job of it. Um, and so, our goal will be, once it goes to Planning Commission, I'll come to y'all probably April seventh, so that it's not at a regular zoning public hearing, where you just have a clear, full agenda, right? And then, and then of course, hold public hearings through first and second reading. Um, but that's, I mean, that's really what I had to share with y'all today, and, um, just to thank you guys for your support, and then I'll, I'd really like to let y'all kind of dig in with your questions, um, with, with Lee Anne and Jonathan, but also, um, just in the thing now and then, it will be helpful for us to return and talk about specific topics in depth, you can do that as well, to be really just focusing on the housing and transportation.
Y'all have done a yeoman's work, we really have. They're very intentional, very structured, very inclusive, and I appreciate it.
Well, without further ado, I'll give you over to the third Lee of the day.
Yeah, and my apologies, I don't have any phoenixes or waves or stars. Hopefully it'll be informative and interesting for you. So, um, again, my name is Lee Anne King, I'm a Clarion Associate, and, and our team is leading the development of housing element of the comprehensive plan. And so what I've been sharing today is, um, just the highlights of the housing market assessment that was conducted at the beginning of this process, that really helped us understand what's, what are the conditions in this community relative to your local housing market? Um, and comparing that to the broader kind of metropolitan area as well. Um, we coupled that with a lot of engagement, um, Lee has done a great job of highlighting that for you, um, on the housing side, the way we could augment that was by meeting the stakeholders throughout the process, the Planning Commission. Um, we met with them just two rounds, one to try and get their input initially about the issues and concerns and aspirations they have for the community, and then to test those ideas once we've kind of turned to digest and kind of, um, think about those. So we, um, those form the guiding principles for the plan, and really those market trends and guiding principles were then taken to develop the implementation recommendations which will break in the plan. So, I'm happy to take questions as we work through this. Again, I'm gonna hit the highlights on the housing market trends, um, there were three main takeaways that we wanted to kind of highlight for you today, and the first one is, and I should say, we were looking at two thousand to two thousand and sixteen data, um, ACS data. We did use some local, um, market sales data as well as part of this assessment. Um, so the three key takeaways are, one, rental prices and home values are rising faster than incomes, that's probably not new news to you. Um, second, there's an unmet demand for, uh, a mix of housing types, and we've got some graphics to illustrate that. And finally, there's a gap in affordability for extremely low-income renters, and affordability likely needs to decline based on some of the analysis.
These are not unique to Columbia, are these?
Native.
That, that's right. Well, these are, these are, these are definitely not unique to Columbia, I think the majority of communities that we work within are dealing with these same issues.
Well, I, I would say that you have to add in to us that because of the tax structure, the rental prices are continuing, two years ago it was three months worth of collection to cover the property tax, now it's three and a half months, so I think it has a direct effect, um, for us here, a little more uniquely than others for a lot of the aspects, you are correct, but. You know, that does affect because we have fifty-two percent rentals in Columbia for homeownership, which is, you know, that we've been really pushing to try to.
That's right.
Get over that harm.
Well, it, it, I think it serves to keep us, um, thinking creatively. On how we can make this happen, but at the same time, uh, it does not cost us a certain, you know, create.
Right.
Population as well as, uh, certain areas of the city, their ability to, um, be as successful as others, in terms of amenities, in terms of fashion, and that sort of, you know, go ahead and, and other than that.
These are fun balancing acts.
Right, we're, and we're, we're making some of them, we don't wanna make a mistake, a lot of other cities that may be trying to get to.
That's right, and I think that we are at a unique standpoint in comparison to other cities, because I think you can kind of see and learn from a lot of other communities and what they've done and learn from their shortfalls, um, so I think that's an important.
And learn from the cities who are aggressive, and I think the key point of this being part of Columbia Compass is, yeah, it may not be unique to other cities, but there are other cities that are being very aggressive and innovative in addressing the needs, and that's where we really need to use that to guide our policymaking and some of the things that we do.
And there's some of those case studies included within the draft chapter that kind of highlights some of the tools that were deployed. Um, so this slide compares, and again, this is that same, um, from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and sixteen timeframe, but it shows those market trends, I mean, the first line being the median income and how there was a percentage change of thirty-eight percent over that timeframe. When you compare that to the median rent and the median home values, they're, they're, you know, they're not in alignment, so median rent rose fifty-nine percent, median home value, and those are kind of stated home values for homeowners, uh, was sixty-seven percent. Median sales price was about equivalent, which you would somewhat expect to see, given that people can, can afford to buy so much housing, um, but with the, the values of the rents are actually increasing pretty significantly, more so than incomes during that timeframe.
In the, um, the, the, the market where you, you had, you know, the increase of sixty-seven percent, is some of that value, are you using the, the property tax as your basis for that number? Is some of that, just because of the continuing assessments that are going on and stuff, is that part of that equation, is that what we're seeing?
So, that's likely some of that, I think it's actually based on the homeowner's value of their property, and so they're probably taking into account what they know they're being assessed for, and that that's.
The assessment's probably a good baseline.
Right, and that relationship with their market value, you know, somewhat of a judgment call. Um, sales price, you know, is only a, a certain sector that's actually on the market and being sold, so that only tells us so much, so it's helpful to augment that with actual value of the property.
Going back to Mr. Rick's point about rent and the impact of rent, the baseline there is ninety-nine, and you go to two thousand and sixteen, and two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven, you had Act three eighty-eight, which moved the rental taxes up substantially. I, I would say that if you took the tax impact, about that fifty-nine percent, you'd get closer, much closer to the median sale price of thirty-five percent and median income of thirty-eight percent. The state legislature with Act three eighty-eight screwed it up to rents.
It's a great place to retire, it's a bad place to rent.
And that's right.
Um, looking at your housing stock, and I think you mentioned a statistic of fifty-two percent, was a probably a more concurrent number, these are again based on two thousand and sixteen data points. Um, but the majority of your, um, the folks living in housing units within Columbia are renters, in comparison to the NSA, which is the metropolitan statistical area, the larger region that Columbia sits within, which is roughly about a third of that population are renters. Um, and, um, one thing I did wanna mention is that when we looked at this, we looked at age cohorts, because we know there's a student population here that, that are renting, they're not all owning homes, um, but what we found was that, that across the age cohorts, there was kind of a higher percentage of renters in comparison to the broader NSA. And, um, in general, this is also no surprise, you have some amazing historic properties within Columbia, and on average, your housing stocks are a little bit older, some, some of the surrounding areas that are more newly developed. Um, when you look at the actual housing stock and how that breaks down, um, this, this top pie chart here shows you all the units within, so you've got forty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-five units, and about a little more than half of those are single-family detached units. About a quarter are attached, fewer than ten in the structure, and, um, slightly less than a quarter are attached, ten or more in the structure, so more like an apartment building, and that's like, um, a piece there for mobile homes. When you look at, um, compare that to kind of who's living within those units, when you look at owner-occupied units, um, about ninety-one percent of owner-occupied units are single-family detached, with a little less than ten percent, um, divided up between the other categories. When you look at renters, again, that, you know, fifty-five percent of, um, folks living within the city are in this category, you see much more variety in terms of the types of housing that they're living in, and the majority are not single-family attached, they're one of the other kind of attached products that you will find them living in. Um, so you talked, uh, you know, about rental trends, and this is something that we looked at as well, and that, that changed between two thousand and two thousand and sixteen, and I think that to your point, you know, that the state made some adjustments that have had a significant impact on rental rates within Columbia. Um, when we look particularly at the low end, um, the less than five hundred, you know, that, that changed, there were forty-three percent of units, rental units in two thousand that were less than five hundred dollars, passed forward to two thousand and sixteen, and you've got thirteen percent of the rental units within that category. So that was a, a pretty significant difference, and you can kind of see how the columns have changed, um, over time in the various categories. Um, not quite as dramatic, but similar type of trend for home value, looking at the different, um, price, um, values of homes, um, and we, again, looking at kind of the lower end, the less than hundred thousand dollar, uh, category, um, uh, obviously we've been in kind of a booming time in terms of, um, housing prices. Uh, back in two thousand, over fifty percent of your housing was less than a hundred thousand dollars in terms of that home value. Um, two thousand and sixteen, we're looking at slightly less than a quarter of those, um, units within that category. So, there's, so there's a little bit of a mismatch, and again, this is not unique to Columbia, this is a common trend that we're seeing, um, throughout the United States particularly, and kind of, um, not a great areas that people wanna be living in. Um, we looked at market trends, actual kind of sales data within the city of Columbia and the metro area, um, to see, you know, what's being sold, and this is for year two thousand and eighteen. Um, no surprise, the vast majority of homes for the city that were, um, on the market and sold were single-family detached homes. Um, an interesting point when we looked at the data, we actually looked at the days on the market, and what we found is that patio homes that you'll see highlighted there in that, the red, um, boundary for both the city and for the metro area, stayed on the market not as much times. There was some suggestion that maybe this is a product that more people would like to have, and that there's interest in having a variety of products out there that may be unmet today. Um, we also looked at affordability, so looking at, this is specific to renters, um, looking at the various income ranges that renters. So looking at, this is specific to renters, looking at the various income ranges that renters fall within, what rent amount is affordable to those incomes? And then how many units are rented within that affordability range? And what we found was that there's a rental gap, and this is one of those top three takeaways that I mentioned on that first slide, that roughly, folks earning less than $20,000 a year, there's kind of a gap in the properties that are available for those two.
It's a significant gap.
Yeah, and it's 36% of the rental population is within that category. So it's, you know, that's significant. We also, again, starting with 2016 numbers, did a forecast for 10 years ahead. No crystal ball, but, you know, I think, you know, good analysis based on trends of what we think we might be experiencing over the next several years in terms of affordability challenges, looking at both owner affordability and rental affordability. And similar to what you saw in the last slide, you know, both for the rent land ownership, folks on the low end earning less than $35,000 a year, it's anticipated that percent of homes that are affordable to those households earning those incomes is likely going to decline over time. So we've got affordability challenge, again, nothing, not unique in any respect to Colombia or the region. This is happening throughout the United States. So that's the data part, is it?
May I ask a question? A few slides back. Go back, go back a little.
This one?
No, the next one. Next one? I'm sorry.
So the other way?
Yeah, Paul, yeah. Right there.
May I ask you a question? When you look at demographics, places in the city, the average rental, the average rental, I think I read somewhere, $800, $853? When we surveyed, when we surveyed demographics of the region, the city, is that consistent with all parties included?
So there's a map that's actually in the plan and in this housing market study that it shows the average rental rates for different, I believe it's census tract. I can't remember the exact geography that we used for it. But it shows a spatial distribution of median rates for these different geographies that census provides. And there are distinctions. So there are definitely places where the median rent is higher than in other places, and that is mapped in the plan.
So that is mapped?
Yes, yes.
Be interesting to look at that.
Yeah, so this is...
Is that included today?
Yeah, I believe that map is actually in the plan, and it's also in this housing market study. It's on the website as well. So I'm sure we can, yeah, get that for you. Likewise, we also looked at the spatial distribution of housing values. Maps are slightly different. Those are by dots because they're pinpoint of actually units and what their values are.
Which brings up a question because we had some interesting conversations, I think you and I did, about a year ago where people were complaining that their properties weren't assessed. They were under assessed the value, which has a, it's tough because it creates more tax. But from the value standpoint, and I'm curious if y'all ran across some discrepancies in assessed values as y'all were kind of looking at the wrong picture?
Well, we didn't, we didn't do a direct comparison with, for one, the census data won't necessarily let us get to that level to do the one-to-one comparison. They kind of aggregate the data for anonymity's sake. But that's, I mean, that's a challenge in looking at home value. It's based on that person's understanding of what their homes were. So especially in a market like this, sometimes it can be elevated beyond what it actually is.
And some under.
And some under.
It depends on the assessment here. So if your house was assessed or you purchased your house during a recession, it's at that point. And the assessment only happens every five years. So in a five-year period, that can be quite an influx. So if you hit that assessment at a certain point, you're going to be low. Or if you hit it high, and then there's a dip, well, then all of a sudden, you're up high. So it has that five-year window, it's a pretty big window based on a market changing.
Yeah.
So again, the guiding principles for the plan, we have five of them for this housing element, were very much developed using the inputs that we received from the public, from the stakeholders, from the planning commission that we met with. And in terms of stakeholder groups, we met with a variety of different folks that are interested in housing in neighborhoods in the city. We met with housing advocates and developers, real estate interests, neighborhood preservation interests, folks that are working on kind of transitional emergency housing. So a lot of different folks were kind of, were met with during this process to get their insights and concerns for the future of Colombia with respect to housing in neighborhoods. And so we took all of that information, and we generated these five guiding principles. And that element actually has more language that describes specifically what we mean by each of these. But they are walkable and vibrant neighborhoods, which is something that we're trying to achieve. The enhancement and stabilization of underserved neighborhoods. Protection of historical and cultural characteristics. Affordable housing and mix of housing and neighborhood choices. So those were really the five key themes that kept rising to the top as we moved through this process. And so what I've got here is just a quick summary of the implementation recommendations under those five guiding principles that we've set out. So in terms of walkable and vibrant neighborhoods, there's a lot of overlap with some of the stuff that you'll see in the land use element and the transportation element of comprehensive planning. The beauty of comprehensive planning is all this stuff feeds into each other. So you get to decide exactly where it's going to go. But we wanted to call this out in this chapter because we thought it was important to think about a full and complete neighborhood and this idea that as your neighborhood is redeveloped and revitalized over time, you want to think about all the components that make a complete neighborhood. Sidewalks, lighting, having access to parks, potentially trails. If they're maybe local services that are within a short community distance that they can use for daily needs. Those types of things, schools, those make complete neighborhoods. And so there's some recommendations in there for how to go about evaluating that over time and trying to encourage that as, again, as neighborhoods redevelop and change in the future. In terms of enhancement and stabilization of underserved neighborhoods, underserved neighborhoods, excuse me, we had a couple of recommendations. The first one was for departments within the city and agencies outside of the city that work to assist these underserved neighborhoods to be collaborating because there's some efficiencies and maybe some other opportunities to be kind of coordinated, having better coordination of different efforts. Secondly, ongoing neighborhood assistance. We've learned from kind of watching what other communities have done with respect to how do we revitalize an underserved neighborhood without displacing the people that live there? And it's a challenging thing to do. And one of the, one of the best ways to go about achieving that is having ongoing neighborhood assistance and really creating a community dialogue within that neighborhood about what they want to be and how, having those members of the community involved in that discussion. It's particularly challenging for renters who don't actually own the property that they are living within.
So would you say one and two kind of collectively need to be done together because you need to...
That's right, that's right, yeah. Creating some efficiency and some focus among all the different organizations that are working on these issues and then making sure that the community is part of that dialogue. Both folks that live, parents and landowners that own the land and make decisions about change in the community.
So that inevitably become a part of the narrative with community organizations and them collaborating together. There's been much conversation about gentrification and that sort of thing. Gentrification as opposed to community development. How do we, how do we get that word out to community organizations? I'm sure all of us become a hundred with that. But how do you, how do you build up that emphasis within the community where it's not gentrification, but community development?
Right. I think to some degree, I don't think there's a silver bullet.
No, it's not.
Yeah, I think we've learned from other communities. I'm thinking that we've got, here in Boston.
It's a scary one.
Yeah, California has some communities that have really dealt with this. I think that the more that you can foster a sense of stewardship and kind of, you know, sense of place within that community, and I think stewardship's a good way to describe it, that as a landowner, you are part of that community and you want to be invested and involved with the people that live there as well and thinking about the future and how that change occurs. From a government standpoint, you want to be looking at the types of investments that are going to help that community without pushing them out. And that's a delicate balance to make.
Very delicate.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so I think that, like I said, the idea behind the ongoing neighborhood assistance is that you're continually looking and talking about this stuff and watching as trends start to occur so that if you do see people being displaced and if that is something that is starting to occur, how can you respond to it and making sure, having a dialogue about that? And I think that's really a key part of it.
Sounds like to me, you know, part of that is making sure that we keep people invested. I mean, you gotta have, it can't be all assistance from outside. It's gotta be assistance inside. Yeah, you gotta have skin on the game. And so helping people make sure they can leverage that. And, you know, like anything, all it takes is one or two, three, and then it starts to spread and everybody comes together. I think those are some good points.
Same thing. I think it's going to be incumbent upon us as a city to make sure that we do engage people who live within a certain area that may be just about to go through that process. Stakeholders are mainly people who live within the area versus assistance from elsewhere that really doesn't have a history there. And that's where the conflict comes in. We, as a city, can, I think, go about this and not make the mistakes of the other cities that may, by honestly and truly engaging people who live in an area. Investments from within, but at the same time, helping them to develop the tools to...
To be creative.
To be creative and stabilize their own situation. And as a result of that, it doesn't matter how you move, anybody benefits. But it's not difficult to tell when people are not benefiting from what we're doing.
A lot of the work we've done in the city over the last several decades before we even got here, whether it's intentionally or not intentionally, has been really focused on making sure that the city is diverse. I mean, some of the programs that the GORI, the BAC, GORI's Department and others have worked on, has really helped us retain the number of folks who otherwise would have left the city and a nice middle-class and working-class community. It's going to require, I mean, the flow of capital and the strength of capitals are strong. But it's going to require the same degree of intentionality to make sure we remain the city of all people. It's going to take some systemic, I mean, we've done human's work as a city in terms of taxes, you know, has it always been the same with some of our sister jurisdictions? Just reality is reality. And we now account for less than 20% of the tax burden. But that larger tax burden plays into all these other issues in some creative ways. But it is required that intentionality happen in the community as active as possible, helping shape what we want this city to look like for the next generation too. It requires that sort of intentionality in that conclusion.
Yeah.
I agree.
This is a great conversation. We're talking about five, and just taking into account the later items.
Just continue, just continue this dialogue as we move through the process.
This is, I can get through these, I just have two, three more slides. So I can get through these pretty quickly. So protection of historical and cultural characteristics. There's also, again, the land and cultural resources element that have a lot of focus, particularly on this. But we wanted to include this in the idea that supporting property maintenance is important to think about if there's more stock of housing within Colombia. Affordable housing, we have several recommendations here. Developing incentives, updating your affordable housing locational standards. We actually looked at that as a part of this and thinking about, we had a team member that's worked with the federal government and looking at HUD, looking at those standards on a national level, made some recommendations there. Looking at public land and funding, are there opportunities to leverage some of the resources that you have available for affordable housing? There are other communities that are doing that. We have some case studies including them here. The housing challenge is not specific to Colombia, it's regional. You've got people that are moving in and out of their city every day, going to work and coming home from work. And so it's important to think about this kind of from the larger standpoint of the housing market that's kind of the regional perspective. And the housing land interest is a really good model that other communities are starting to look to more so as a way to kind of share and leverage the resources of different localities and how they can kind of deal with this housing issue on a broader scale. And then transitional housing services are providing some opportunities for those that really have the most challenging housing situations within the community. Mix of housing and neighborhood choices, while it's similar to the issue of affordable housing, it's not necessarily the same thing. And what we're seeing based on the data is that you probably need a little bit more of a variety in this community. And there's some opportunity to incentivize multi-unit housing within the city. Also look for residential care uses and I mentioned complete neighborhoods earlier. So that is the end of my presentation. I'll write on my creation.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Jonathan. I apologize for not being the fourth Lee to speak today. You can call me Lee if you'd like to. I want you to briefly speak about transportation. And I'm going to sort of set the table for the existing conditions, which helps to frame our recommendations and probably projects as we see moving forward. This is a snapshot from 2017 when we looked at this. If you look across the board, you can see primarily here in Colombia, we drive by ourselves. We don't take transit, we don't carpool, although we do have a high propensity for walking. A lot of that is within the city, which is associated not only with the university, but just the connectedness of the city here in the downtown grid that we have, which is a positive as you look across the board and you compare the city with Greenville and Charleston, they fall well below that 20%. Commuting patterns, you've got about 28,000 commuters who come into the city every day for jobs, whereas you export out 8,500. So you've got a lot of regional mobility occurring.
Toll bread, it sure generates some income, wouldn't it?
Yeah, absolutely would.
This is Lexington County.
That is just Lexington County, it is not considered...
That's how Fairfield, Cresswell, Newbury, Sumner.
And having been one of those people who's been regionally, you have people who commute from North County as well. So there's a growing demand, as I did that for almost two years before moving here. So a lot of patterns, you're commuting here, there's an attraction here, be it jobs, be it location, whatever that might be, you're seeing these attractions occurring. Fortunately, we're not seeing those stay here, and that ties back to what we were talking about with housing.
You gonna have one screen for that?
Absolutely.
That's where it gets vision.
All right. Okay.
You gotta watch the audience, man.
I know.
I gotta focus on you guys, not on what I'm saying. Street ownership, SCDOT is your primary owner. They are the fourth-largest owner of streets in the United States, yet they are one of the smallest states in the United States. They own about 55% of the streets here within the city of Colombia. They own about 41,000 lane miles within the state of South Carolina. You also have a little bit of a split there between the city of Colombia, 25% and 19% with primarily the county and/or private local streets and the university, which is, which is an interesting model, and it helps us frame some of the recommendations. The whole point is actually this, which is going to frame some of our recommendations, and that's safety. And if you've watched the trends here, you know that we had almost 1,000 fatalities in South Carolina last year. You can see here as we look at the crashes across just the city of Colombia, you can see that the majority of those crashes are occurring on US primary routes. Again, going back to the commuting patterns that you're seeing here, 378, your US1s, and then your South Carolina primary routes, and those roads that are feeding into those primary routes. And then the interstates being a very, very small percent, even though they carry a huge amount of traffic coming in and out every day. You are at the crossroads of South Carolina, and a lot of people travel through here as well.
Is this me, or does everyone see like a ramp up in the state newspaper recognition of... of crashes and traffic jams and what? I'm seeing a lot of it, like every morning.
Yeah, I actually made the same comments to John today.
It's not just me, right?
No, that's the headlines that get pushed out even through their internet forum and what's online.
That's because they're always commuting from Charlotte and Columbia.
Almost every morning.
Yeah, no, it is almost every morning, and.
Well, it's eighteen-wheelers, all too, some sunny companies.
It's a lot of factors that are feeding into that, it's primarily the fact that we're one of the deadliest states in the United States with the number of fatalities, there's big push with SCDOT through Target Zero to get those down as well as US DOT, and so you're gonna see that push, and that theme is gonna carry through this. But as we look at the overall crashes, you can see right here, this is the breakdown in the top crash, not necessarily locations, but corridors, you can see Garner's Ferry Road is the number one, followed by some of the interstates, I-77, 26, 20, and then we start to dig down into some of the local streets here.
I noticed under your primary causes, you don't have potholes and construction.
No, it's actually.
Which is where you, if you listen to some of those reports, it's like, those people are dodging and trying to get over on the patchwork and everything.
For the land use, or for two, not land use, but for the categories that are provided from Department of Public Safety, unfortunately, road conditions is not, but you do see some of that showing up.
I think that's probably.
Could be, unfortunately, or unfortunately, it's not tied to SCDOT who's responsible for that, but what you actually do see, that does show up when you look at side swipes, which is number three. Your top primary cause, though, is speeding, we love to drive fast here in South Carolina, and that is indicative of a couple things, one, just a, just the propensity of us to do that, but also the design of the railways too, and we'll dig into that a little bit. But the overall primary crashes is property damage only, injury crashes takes up about another third of that, and then fatalities, there were 20 fatalities, all of those occurred within the city of Columbia, those were within the rich and communal portion of the city. So, one of the things I talked about, the primary causes, the way to help curb that is through good design, and so one of the things that we've worked at here is putting together a street priority matrix, you can see here, we've got a snippet of that just for the downtown, and this actually helps to provide guidance on where the design speed should be, depending on the street types, you can see the street typology over here where there's major arteries, minor collectors, or local, this helps to frame how the streets should be, and accommodations there, and some of the others that I don't have listed here, but you've got the urban core, the edge, rural areas, and then of course, multimodal facilities are also important, and then all of these capture in what the priority mode should be for that street, whether at this point it should be the movement of buses, it should be the movement of pedestrians or bicycles, or it should be cars, this will help to define that, you can see that for the travelway through the pedestrians, and other elements that are important, like access management if you look at, if we go back to Garner's Ferry Road, access management would help a lot with crashes alone.
Is access management what?
So, access management's a good question, access management is looking at consolidation, the driveways, connectivity between, giving people the option of going between or connecting the side streets without getting back on 378, make a small trail, or pull out, make a right, then make another left, and if you could have done that a couple other ways, it just increases the safety. You're gonna see some recommendations here before I get into the priorities, and each of these fall under these themes, you can see here, this is plan and implement, and one of those that I think is a very fitting example of how to deal with the high level of crashes that are occurring within the city is developing a street design manual, we showed portions of this, we have the street priority matrix, again, the quickest way to do it is enforcement, but best way to do it is through design and changing how your streets interact, accommodation for all modes, bicycles, pedestrians, cars, controlling the speeds along there, you can go in and change your speed limit from 45 to 25, but you're still gonna come back, your 80% top speed's gonna be 50 miles per hour, if you don't change how it feels, you don't get that. But then also developing prioritization of projects by type, and then adopting the official street typology map that's shown on the previous.
For us, that's a challenge, when we look at the places that we'd like to put a bump out to slow down traffic, because a three-way stop doesn't work, because somebody looks, nobody's there to guard through in a highly-traffic neighborhood, but we can't seem to get the highway department to work with us, even if we're willing to pay it, so how do we do that in those areas, I mean, what are folks doing in other areas to encourage better inter-agency workings, because that's one of our struggles, especially at 55% of the roads we don't control.
Correct, and what you're seeing a lot of agencies do is they are moving to the ownership of the streets, I talked about South Carolina, over 41,000 miles of streets, they're only streets they shouldn't own, they're only streets within cities, their primary function is the movement of cars along the interstate, and fortunately, they got into business of owning neighborhood streets that they really shouldn't, and they don't have a control over, or downtown streets where the blend, where the idea's not necessarily to move cars, but also to move people, and they struggle with that because their design manual doesn't have a chapter that says, how do I deal with pedestrians, and so you have to find that balance. They're getting better, they're not great yet, they're still adopting new guidelines as we move forward, you're seeing ASHTO, which is sort of the governing body for highway and transportation officials, they're adopting low-speed urban guidelines, the advanced copy that I've seen through SCDOT is starting to show more areas for that. But in locations like a neighborhood, the best and quickest way we've seen is for streets, is for communities to take those streets back and control those streets, it's a financial burden to the city to do that.
Are you seeing other municipalities do that?
Yeah.
In South Carolina?
In South Carolina.
We're on the.
DOT will.
We're actually at the tail end of negotiating.
Is 55% coming back our way, or?
No, it's not, but we've got.
I think you have to be strategic.
You do. Do, and really do, and what I will tell you is, even if, let's say you wanted to take over, you know, Garner's Ferry Road, which is 378, they're not gonna let you because it's a US primary route, they're still gonna wanna make, but as they come through downtown, there's ways to work with it.
Our staff has done a great job, hands-on, 20,000 vehicles, but also very granular, I mean, it is a process.
But to take over the streets, you know, one thing, especially if they're not providing, we need that portion of funding that they're collecting for that, but the other thing is that we have to have the ability to enforce it, and we can't put an officer on every street, because the reality is, is when we do enforcement in a neighborhood, she tell me, 80% of them are people who live in the neighborhood who end up getting tickets, somewhere in there?
A lot.
So, speeds, speed cameras and things like that, that other communities utilize, we can't utilize, and so for us, we need those options because we can't afford to put an officer on every corner, it's just impossible.
And you don't get long-term compliance when you do enforcement, you may get immediate drops that, you have the time period that they're out there, but long-term, people get back to their habits, that's why I state that design is what actually solves the issue.
An example of design, where the DOT has come to the table with us, and our John and Krista and all of them are doing a great job of community outreach that we as a city are taking on, it is a DOT project, but Millwood, so be ready, because this is an example that's about to go online very soon with the traffic calming, no lane reduction, but the lanes will be shrunk, I guess, for lack of a better way to explain it, you're about to hear about a lot of outreach that we're gonna try to do.
Is that a community?
But that was the comment I was gonna make to Daniel's point, yeah, DOT, but the other challenge is that the community, when you do stuff that slows down traffic, i.e. bike lanes, or, you know, traffic calm, then, you know, you get people not liking it, but that is how you can do this through the community, and we've gotta be committed to that long-term, you know, benefit, even if there's some short-term acts of people getting used to it. It was a perfect segue for a project that Yalacotta doesn't hear about here pretty soon, but I think the outreach is very well done and it's phased, so the bike lanes that the DOT came and said, hey, we're doing resources, we're gonna do payment either way, if you wanna do shrink the road and put on, put the bike lanes on the sides, we're saying yes, everybody's ready, just say yes.
That's a perfect example of partnership, that accomplishes the goals, one of the other things with safety, targeted safety improvements for all modes, and then adopting city standards to encourage traffic calm where appropriate, and then adopting a vision zero plan, which is very important for the state of South Carolina to reduce the overall fatality rate, not only here, but across the state. And then partnerships, which could be better timing here, but partnering on broader regional transportation projects, whether it's regional rail, commuter rail throughout the state, or larger projects such as Carolina's Crossroads, and then targeted street ownership, we talked about that already, and then railroad projects, which is, which I could spend another hour talking about the importance of that, and how that impacts the community on overall mobility, but that is something that is important to the residents that live here, and we did hear quite a bit of that in our outreach with the community. Innovation and technology, we can't escape this, we are changing, we're evolving, and where we're going in the future, and everything's getting more and more connected, and you cannot drive your car, we got your car talking back to you and connected in a completely different way than it used to be. You're already seeing signs of that, I'll applaud the city on their advancements and coordination with SCDOT and other providers, as we already starting to have small cell technology on a lot of our traffic signal poles here, but creating that connected signal system, which is partially under the way at this point right now, and then leveraging shared mobility options, which is something that a lot of communities struggle with, we're seeing ordinance that's pop up about scooters and things like that, but be open-minded, look at the options, evaluate it, and what makes the most sense for the community, and then plan for the impacts of technology, because it's coming faster than we want to think it's going to be here. And then data, again, in the transportation world, we love data, it helps us to prioritize projects, that is, one of the things that I would stress the most is prioritization of transportation projects, which I'll mention a few here in a few minutes, and then a parking study. For the many years that I have lived here, we always hear about parking, there's not enough parking, there's too much parking, it's in the wrong place, using data to define where that might be and how we can use that and better leverage that, not only from just a supply and demand, but also from a revenue source would be a recommendation for us. And then lead by example, designing larger-scale projects, we heard a lot of the community talk about comprehensive plans, looking at how streets can be better, utilizing the street, it's one of the largest public spaces that any city has, streets should be great, they should be designed to accommodate all modes, though not just a singular mode. And then lastly, the build environment, looking at context and developing able to traffic control pilot project programs, whatever it might be, small things, there's things you can do with pavement markings, there's things that you can do to drastically change with not a whole lot of money, and SCDOT will partner with you on that. I mentioned this earlier, you guys in the city of Columbia are the crossroads of South Carolina, you've got three main interstates coming through here, which is really an interesting thing, really four if you count 126, and so you are the crossroads, so creating those gateways, whether they're regional, whether they're local, those signature places that identify where Columbia is and are in Columbia as a priority, we heard this in our outreach as well. And then some of the priority projects that we've got, corridor enhancements, we'll see again, short-term, mid-term, and long-term, we've grouped each of these streets, looking at priorities that we heard, or those that we recommended, and pulling in from some other plans as well, you can see here, some of these are really complex, some of these are not, but it's important for these corridor enhancements, for these to be afforded, this gives us a sort of a test, if you will, to see how well we can implement these. Corridor operation projects, we've heard a lot about synchronized timings through here, improving traffic flow as well, small safety projects, you can see an example over there in Harbison, about our park terrace, a real line up there, that small change right there would make a tremendous difference on how traffic would flow through that area, which is one of the most congested places that we see. And then lastly, intersection improvement projects, you know, one more after this, but targeted, some of these are already underway, some of these are moving forward, but a lot of these will make a huge impact on overall mobility, not just for the motor vehicle, but also from the pedestrian and bicycle swing point. And then lastly, some of the other projects, rail crossings, validation, improving rail crossings, and then in access management as it relates to the number of crosses, and then quiet zones, and that's all that I have.
Railroad safety zones, we don't use the word quiet, it makes railroad crap.
Okay, safety zones.
Question, this might be a leak question, but I know when I read it, I saw something about sidewalks, but John, you really talked about sidewalks, where is that in the plan as far as understanding where we are?
That is a great question, and we've mentioned this as she was starting off, kind of giving an overview, this really builds upon the wall by Columbia plan, and so all those recommendations that were in that plan, which was much more exhaustive and thorough, filters directly into this point, so we carried those recommendations in, didn't get into detail on that, because we had spent a lot of time with that, but those do carry.
And we do have a recommendation in there about targeted maintenance for all modes, so one of the things that we're talking to departments, as we were talking to the public, is not just about, you know, creating new things, but making sure that we're doing that maintenance, whether it's road maintenance, or sidewalk maintenance, bike lane maintenance, all of these, all of these things that make it important, thinking about how we're setting aside that budget.
We definitely make sure, even just the addition, because more people walk, they have safer places to walk, not having sidewalks, it's a very difficult, it's a really get-around and get out of a single family, a single-driven cars.
Yeah, we've made headway in the last few years in terms of redevelopment, the engineering standards require sidewalks instead of sidewalks and redevelopments, it's really those existing neighborhoods that are kind of more popular around sidewalks.
Are you gonna promote varying power lines in your recommendation?
That's actually a recommendation of the natural resources section is to look at a undergrounding plan, so looking at kind of that planning process for key corridors, so that's not part of transportation, just a little bit, like Leanne's.
Can I ask that question, the neighborhood planning presentation, is new sidewalks coming along?
Yeah, so if you're looking at that, one of the things that we recommend is looking, we've got some case studies in there about what other communities are doing, but some communities like Greenville, for example, are just basically burying their lines whenever there's new development, and that can be a little bit more difficult for us, Greenville's a little bit more compact, right, so we don't wanna, we wanna do it a little bit more strategically, so the recommendation is to look at a plan towards implementation, and whether we could do that in a regulatory or privacy or what.
Any projects, any objects on the bull?
My understanding, they're in a negotiation with one property manager, and in order to move forward with that, they have to finish that negotiation, because they have to.
We'll change them still, man.
They're having conversations, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your information. Can I get a question?
Thank you. Yes, sir. So, Mr. Mayor, my board has to have you all transitioning into session now, but if we can get to Board 20, I think we'll be okay. So at this time, we're gonna have Missy Coffin, our Director of Budget and Program Management, to give a very brief overview as we're kicking off our fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget workshops, and so this really is just what we normally do, give you information of how we're proceeding with budget, and after that, because it's, I'll be ready. Brandon, Mr. Robert Chambers with Financial and Utility Management Consultants, is the Financial and Utility Management Consultant for Black and Beach Management Consulting LLC, and Robert is here to update you on the awards or rates study, which is also on your agenda tonight for approval.
Good afternoon, everybody, I know y'all have been anxiously awaiting with bated breath for the budget discussion, so wait no longer, we are here, which we stayed here, so.
We've got a few meetings.
Yeah, it is, it is an ongoing process, and of course, a lot of things you talked about today are also very future, future thinking, so we are looking forward to working through the FY 2021 budget with everyone. What we're talking about today is it really, planning to go into details of any of these items, it's mostly just to give you an overview, sort of where we are, and what's to come, and that schedule that we're working out. So what we're talking a little bit about today, if you're getting a copy of the presentation, it may be loaded as well, if Ms. Hannah can load it for us.
All right, we'll get you.
So, part of what we're talking about are budget drivers and maybe discussion topics, things that we will be bringing to account in more detail, or the things that you are already having more detail in the conversation about. So the budget capacity, the first item, what that's really getting to is where we are with regards to our budget faculty, mostly as it relates to the general fund, in regards to the.
It's on the record.
So the budget, as you recall, we budget the general fund. So the budget, as you recall, we budget the general fund. And it's reflective of a, we incorporate surplus as part of that budget. In years past, we tried to wean ourselves from that budget, using the budget surplus to balance the budget with. So we, of course, start with a budget that, with the same goal. However, between now and the time we pass the budget, that's a different story. Budget additions are those things that we talked about throughout the year, things that we counselled or staffed to talk about adding to the budget or would be things to consider that would be added. But also those things that are out of our control. For instance, state retirement is another increase coming up this year, 1%. We also have adjusted our healthcare costs in anticipation of the experience rate being applied to us now that we are going into our. This will be coming up our third year in the state health plan. Under revenue generation, some of those items are obviously underway, which you are aware of, tax exempt study. Where that's coming into play is as you consider the model ordinance and as we're looking at adopting model ordinance changes, that is reflective of elimination of the nonprofit exemption that we currently have. So we may incorporate some of those items together. Fire hydrant fees are approved. Those are reflected, those are being reflected in the revenue, of course, those are. Revenues are applied toward onboard expenses in the general fund. Business license enhanced, that is also underway, the business license enhanced enforcement, that is underway. So far, it's in good progress, good product, so hopefully have more information on that as we move along through the process as well. And then some negotiations with fees with certain entities. Some of that gets to some of the nonprofit organizations that we've discussed that are obviously sharing in the services that the city provides. However, are not contributing with regards to property taxes and that you've discussed in prior years. In terms of distributing our tax base, the cost of our services across our tax base, this would be one that could be.
No, sir, they are down today, so just keep filming.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, he came in and they weren't, they weren't working unfortunately this morning, so.
So it's streaming out?
It is not streaming. Yeah, there's a, there's a note online why it's not streaming, but we'll make it. No, I didn't. I should have, I should have. Missy, I think the bullets here under revenue generation was really to kind of recap for you all a lot of good hard work that's been done over the last year, data collection, figuring the study, implementing the study, not show our time. Study as far as we will have some additional feedback.
But just for clarification, it's not just a tax exempt study. It's an overall tax, looking at all the different components of what makes up our property tax so that we can truly take a look at.
Just another thing that requires participation, the school districts and the county. But I mean, commission a group to table it with the overall tax structure and, and, and I mean, I mean.
If we give this report, that gives them the basis to work on.
Well, well, yeah. We got, we got, we got, we got a crazy sense as to where, as where we follow. I'm talking about systemic responses to it, how we're going to be dealing with it as a, as a, as a region.
Well, I think, I think part of our purpose of doing this, Mr. Mayor, is that we have, have that so that we can truly look at it, so that we can pull that group together and get the responses because, you know, tax exempt property is a force of nature. But we also got these other agencies that aren't capped, that are continuing to grow without any accountability or ability for us to slow down. And, you know, passing referendums saying their one price and then their net price is a whole nother ballgame. So I think it'd be good for us to have the data so we can, we can do that, but I agree with you. I think it did need.
Our challenge is, I mean, just wanting to tackle this systemic challenge sooner rather than later. We led on it, but I think there's much more we all need to be doing. Obviously, we represent what, 17 cents in the dollar now?
Yeah, what would that group look like, counties, boroughs?
Yeah, I think so. Obviously, you want, you want others involved too, but there has to be, there has to be a sense of urgency articulated by the public sector, at least. That yes, we've got to make sure we do the people's business and the resources to do it. But that because of the DNA of our city as a capital city, hosting university and Fort Jackson and everyone else and a significant number of nonprofits, even the nonprofits, maybe profitable nonprofits, that we're just different than the rest of the state. And you can tack on Act 388 on top of that, and it just creates a cocktail that arrests development in a way in which we don't find desirable. It adds to the significant issue of affordability for so many of our residents. And the only way we're going to tackle this, we, we, we reduced our, our mileage, I think much the sugar in some of our, our really talented public safety, I mean, public administrators here over the last several years. But that's been us doing the risk we should do to recognize that, that our taxing policies are the whack. But we represented a, we, we did then and we even now represent, I think back there we were probably 22 cents on, on 20, 20 something cents. Now we're representing 17 cents in the dollar. If we're going to attack this in a thoughtful, comprehensive way, it's going to require some, some really affirmative steps by the county and the school districts, which is one, one of the reasons too. And I say that not, not casting any delay because the reality is that the amount of resources it takes to educate a child is still the amount of resources it takes to educate a child. And then because of our DNA, we have depressed milk, then, then you still have to have the resources to educate our babies. And I, I, I'll stand behind it all day long. But there, we've had some successes and some failures in the last two decades in ways in which we've worked together to try and cut that overall tax liability. But it's something that requires a deep dive. We'll have the data, but I think we do have enough data to, to, to at least start pushing discussions, see if we can build some consensus and make a difference over the county some days. But we, we got, we got a lot of, a lot of dialogue that needs to happen there and I guess some movement there.
It's just important that we, we have it comprehensively because every facet plays into it. And, you know, there's been a lot of different ideas, cap, capping, pushing to do a referendum to cap the property tax so that, you know, you're forced to have to make changes. And, you know, those are things that we're going to have to discuss down the road.
So that is a perfect segue into the next section because I asked Missy and Jeff to list for you this effort that's been put into this discussion of revenue generation, even with all that effort. There's no silver bullet as of today going into this new, next budget cycle. And I agree, the continued discussions, maybe the negotiation of fees with the hospital system, others, even university. We need to continue all of those efforts, but we're still at the beginning of the new budget cycle. Republic's safety recruitment and retention plan has still not been funded. Where our public works, officials are working hard every day to deliver phenomenal services. But we, we are in a budget era. I never try to be almost me. But I think the reality is there that without some other type of revenue generation that we haven't found, we will probably have to discuss some additional options with you all because basic service delivery does not and will not. I will suffer under my watch. So we listed things that are just basic that we are seeing, beginning to see signs of suffering with funding for roads, sidewalks, city facilities, water and sewer. I mentioned the public safety recruitment and retention technology plan that has been presented to you. We want to fund that. Fire facilities, we have several that, that Chujinkas in his family that presented to you already. And obviously, we have a rolling capital replacement program that means there. So Missy, I mean, to take over the discussions, but I really need to kind of drive that point home. And we'll be getting into that in a much deeper dive as the budget discussion continues. We're at that point, so.
Thanks to Ms. Wilson, we, we talk about this every year. And I see the proposed schedule that Missy has here. But wouldn't it be beneficial if we start really looking at having these dedicated work sessions to talk through a lot of these issues in depth?
Sure, absolutely. I'd love to.
And that's a.
Yes, sir.
That's the thing that I'm probably getting at is if we could talk through forensically some of the deeper. Because I think some of the issues there, I think there has to be a deep dive into those things. The other piece of that, you talked about revenue generating, we had that conversation some months ago. And that's something I think we need to really deep dive into how that, those options might impact our budget.
I think that as Mr. Benjamin was saying, Mr. Wilson, if we're looking at the data, what is going to be the response as we, as that data continues to come online, are we going to negotiate some fees? The issue I think why Santa's not going to silverfold is because we know the tools we need in our toolbox. But whether it's state law or whatever other reasons that we presented to do the public safety case, we is not legally defensible in the atmosphere in which we find ourselves right now. So that is why it is a little bit of a dilemma for us to not just be able to pull the trigger on some of these things. We know what we need to do. We researched how maybe we could get it done. But we kind of come up to some, some great walls that kind of pull the trigger and, you know, it's.
People can't fight you when you got the data and we can show clearly the discrepancy there. And even some, I mean, look, there's some agencies in there that passed a referendum that said it was $13 for 100,000 and it's $60 for 100,000. There's no cap in there. And so those are the things that we got to be able to address, which we got to have all the data. And it shows it completely how, to your point of one being neat by having the comparison data from the other places in our state. We can clearly show that and I think we're going to have to use that with the legislature too because we need them to give us the ability to address this issue unless they're willing to contribute.
Yeah, right.
And then when we have that data, though, we also need to, we talked about this, to having those sit down meetings and talking with them. You know, I know the school district has started doing that meeting with them and giving them the data regarding how much it costs to educate kids. You know, one of the things a lot of our legislators didn't know is that Richland One was impacted because the students at Alvin S. Glenn and, and PJJ were actually in their numbers. And they fixed that last year. So I think if we have an opportunity to show them some stuff, we've talked to a lot of them individually and I know Mayor Benjamin's talked to them more in depth, but having that data. And then, like he said, bring them to the table to help them come up with a solution. We shouldn't have to be figuring out all the solutions. They need to tell us these are the tools that, you know, we're willing to push forward and get passed.
And I think that's why we have the data, we can go to them. We've done a portion of it, you know. There you got something that everybody can truly tangibly discuss. Right now, it's a lot of theories and we have some good indications, but not all of the facts. And I think this will help us really have that discussion. How do we work with each other? You know, I mean, school district, are, you know, are you leveraging all your dollars the best way? And are we helping you because we're helping you grow too? We have to do it together. And so I think all of that comes into play. I think you're absolutely right. The sooner we get it, the sooner we have the conversations and we start having them.
As a matter of fact, no matter how much data you have, you're not going to be able to change the bottom line for the city of Columbia by July 1st. The things that you're talking about are not doable under present law. If you want to do things. You've got to face the reality that we've got to make some hard decisions on things that we can do within this city. Because you've got five months before the 1st of July. And if we want to take care of somebody's problems, we've got to think about things that, that are doable by this council.
Well, that was my point, Howard. It's two-fold. We have our work sessions where we're, we're around the table and we're actually making decisions. Because staff continues to bring us stuff. There are several things that we need to say, yes, let's pull the trigger on this. That addresses the medium, but long term, that's only going to get us so far. So we've got to talk long term about how do we address it. So it's two-fold. I'm not saying one versus the other, but we've got to do them both.
But we've got, we've got to make decisions in the next five months to get the, get 300 million dollars between water and sewer and general fund that this council can do.
And we're all for having this discussion. So to Mr. Vine's point, Missy, I, you know, the budget drivers and the themes are here for you all in the essence of time. We just, you know, tried to list some before you. But I think the real issue will be those workshops and how productive we make them in the discussions that we have. So what we could do is maybe bring back some, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the next few work sessions will be dedicated for budget. If there's some additional dates that we can get from you all that may work for you on a hot Tuesday, then we'll throw those out and we'll get with Missy and your.
Soon you can give us those dates, the better.
Absolutely.
The social schedule fills up real quick.
And of course. Is that some of your colleagues whose social calendar may not. We'll try to be modest and maybe add in one in February and one in March and share those dates with you. Okay. Yes.
No, that was great. No, it was your bunch who said this was actually, this was great discussions exactly.
Yeah, Robert's so patient. He's always patient with us.
First company.
Exactly. Thank you, Missy.
Thank you.
Eric is going to let you drive that board.
Oh, yeah.
He's been doing it for a few years.
Thank you very much, Jake, for, you know, giving us the opportunity another year to be here. The purpose of this presentation is just to initiate slash kick off the rate study process this year. So, you know, in the interest of time, I, I won't rush through the presentation, but I'll hit a few key points within the presentation. Please stop me as I, I go if you have any questions as we go through. So the agenda is here. We're going to go through the purpose, kind of talk about what's driving, what we're trying to do. You know, give you a little overview of the approach we'll take and then speak about a few areas that we'll kind of hone in or focus on. The purpose is just to perform an independent study that will provide us with the ability to estimate the water and sewer's ability to fund operating and capital programs, to understand what it costs to serve your existing customers and thereafter determine how best to price those services. Are your existing rates appropriate and if they're new rates or rates that we're looking at, how best to price those rates? So from an industrial perspective, every utility tries to build a resilient water system for current and future generations and that provides a high and acceptable level of service. So in trying to do this, what are the issues that are affecting utilities currently? The number one issue is aging infrastructure, breaking pipe, for example. That's something that Columbia deals with.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
Do you have a good idea of what number one is for us?
Percentage?
Just how about me?
Early time, how old is I?
How, yeah, where are we starting with? Where, where are we building off of?
I, okay, so I wouldn't be able to tell you exactly if the question is which one of these items is the number one.
That's a right one, good question.
I'll say that from a deep dive.
But, but it's pretty, pretty typical across all utilities. Because we do this survey and we survey about 300, 400 utilities across the country that produces a number of resources. So the second is, the second issue is revenues. Are we generating sufficient revenues? What is the weather doing? What is conservation doing? The third issue is rates, you know, are we charging the rates? Do our customers understand the value of, of the water we're providing and the services we're providing? Then you have costs, you know, being resilient, information, technology and age, and you're. Then you have costs, you know, being resilient, information technology and age and your agent workforce. This is all consistent and issues that Columbia as a city is currently dealing with. So what have you done? So Columbia has implemented and continuously implemented a robust annual financial profit, financial planning process that's tied to your budgeting process. We've identified best practices in executing this plan and aligning these best practices we've got Columbia to make. So for example, you have defined performance standards and you track how resilient you are against those performance standards on an annual basis. On an annual basis, you complete that five to ten year financial plan as a part of your budgeting process to understand where you are currently and where you are going forward and what you have to do, you know, how agile you are to adjust to, you know, your requirements going forward, whether operating or capital. You perform cost of service analysis as a part of these studies to understand what it costs to serve customers. And then on a, on a, on an annual basis, you ensure that you're generating enough revenues to meet your requirements. So those four items are what we call best practices and you are currently doing, uh, these things. So what, what's driving your water and sewer utility? You know, it's a traditional mix of, you know, are we doing enough financial planning? Uh, are we running a business that's fluid? And do our customers and our stakeholders understand, uh, what we're doing? And the mix of this is what we're trying to achieve, to run a sustainable, uh, utility, a sustainable business. What's driving the business? Maintaining revenue stability, you know, are you financially sufficient? Are you resilient as it relates to how you operate? You know, are you implementing your operating and capital program? Do you have the resources as it relates to people, processes, technology? Are you meeting your regulations as you should? You know, how do you price the service you provide and, you know, are you competitive? You know, and these are things that are driving how you operate and these are things that, you know, the folks running the business, folks on the back wall, yourself here, you know, constantly monitor as it relates to how you're performing. So we understand what's going on in the, in the industry, we have a highlight of what we're doing. Now, how did we get here? You know, over the years, you know, I've been here a few times and historically.
Always glad to have you.
Thank you, really glad to be here as well. And historically, when we showed this diagram or this illustration, we had years where we did have increases and we had laps. And you've taken the decision to, 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 to look about structuring and implementing the necessary increases. So as an entity over the last, you know, few years, there's been increases and I just commend you, you know, as an entity for, for, you know, taking some tough decisions. So in addition to looking at rate increases, there are events that took place. And in looking at these events, you have desired outcomes associated with these events. So for example, you're implementing a, an AMI program. And how does that program, for example, affect your revenue? You know, we want to achieve a consistent implementation of our capital program, you know. Are we doing that? Yes, we are. You know, well, how does the continued target of making sure we achieve the requirements associated with the twenty twenty program affect how we operate? All right. We're looking to build out the stormwater program, which you all have started to do, you know. And your staff is making sure that you consistently have the resources, whether it be people, processes, technology, for example, to do this. And then, you know, one area is how do you price your services, you know? You will be looking at your miscellaneous services, you know, you've looked at your expansion fees. And there's also the discussion around large user fees and how they impact your business. You know, all these things are, you know, competing interests that has a desired outcome that we have to understand and appreciate and incorporate, which we do into the analysis that we complete here.
Robert, do you show us our, our expansion fees and large user rates compared to other utilities?
We, if we can, when we come back?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So not to go in detail as it relates to this diagram, this table, but this is just a quick synopsis of what we showed you last year. And, you know, upon getting the approval of the twenty twenty seven point oh six, uh, we forecasted that we'll have a potential increase of nine point one five percent in FY twenty twenty one, which is line five. Uh, and the goal, I got, you know, I got hit upside the head, you know, because of this one. But the goal is to see how, how we do against and if we can be better. Uh, and staff, you know, everybody has started to, you know, try to do everything we can to make, make sure that that number potentially comes in lower. But as we go through the process, we'll see. So we just wanted to highlight that this is where we were last year and this becomes a starting point and the baseline of how we go forward.
Robert, is that mainly to get back to the, to, um, debt coverage, that source coverage? Or is it, this year is the one point eight six, our current, current year rate?
Yeah, so, so a part of it, yes, is to support coverage, which is also to support your requirements as it relates to capital, operating and just the program that you're running as a, an entity.
Robert, have you ever taken a look at this and, and got wastewater out of it? You just looked at it if we were just strictly in the water business?
So when you say if we've ever looked at it, can you expound on what you, what you mean exactly?
Have you run a scenario or have we engaged you to run a scenario with us being out of the wastewater business?
Formally, not formally, yes.
Yeah.
So we've never been engaged to run a scenario and I don't want to seem like I'm jumping around.
No, no.
That's your question, okay. So we've never been engaged to run a scenario to say what it would take to be out of the wastewater business. So, you know, that's the first.
Well, I, yeah, I, I think probably two, two points of that would be is what would it look like? Number two, what would it look like if we were out of the wastewater business outside of the city limits? Where our biggest costs, our biggest expense and, and our biggest infractions are all dealing with wastewater, not water. And it'd be interesting what that would do to our model. Would we A, create more revenue? B, have more of an opportunity to maintain and, and have a more robust system? Um, and a lot more easier to maintain over its lifetime. I don't know, I mean, just looking at the projections and the constant cost and this and that, it's maybe worth looking at weighing out what's the benefit versus the cost?
Where's more talk to the group?
That, so that's something we can talk to staff about and, you know, we can.
This is unusually quiet today. Okay, keep moving.
So since two thousand eight to FY twenty, you know, an average, we've looked at about a four point seven percent rate increase. That's an average, there are years when we've had to look at significant rate increases and there's years over this period, multiple years, when there have been no, no rate increases. So that's, you know, generally around, somewhere around or at the level of inflation. But one thing to try to understand as it relates to this number, and I'm going to step off here, is, you know, under the, under our current rates, if we're to look at what tap water would cost on a per gallon basis, what tap water would cost on a per gallon basis, it would be about point zero zero four cents, okay? So let's say now we, we took that number, we said, what would it cost on a daily basis? For everything you just described, everything, all the infrastructure, everything we put in place, what would your water cost on a daily basis, based on your current rate? It would be about seventy, seventy six cents, okay? On the other side, wastewater, if we're to say, what would it cost on a daily basis? Sorry, it would be about one forty, okay? So then let's say we were to look at, you know, the cost of a gallon of bottled water, we pay that dollar for it, okay? Paying that dollar for that gallon of bottled water would be about two hundred and sixty three times higher than what you currently pay today for water.
Except we charge you to dispose that water too, so when you add that, that in.
Okay, maybe seventy eight.
We're going to charge you a stormwater fee too, so we'll get that.
But it would still be higher. The point is, so, so in, in understanding the value of water, what do you get for it? You get the ability to turn on that pipe on an instantaneous basis whenever you want water. You get the ability to shower, to use the toilet, to wash your clothes, to have good drinking water whenever you turn on the pipe. You know, to, to, to wash your stuff, to cook clean, you know, that's all the things you get for the water we're providing. So we, we kind of wanted to highlight that because it's, it's really important in trying to, you know, illustrate the value of water and the value of, of, of what we've been doing, what it is, okay?
I would, I would tell you, Robert, I think most people recognize the value of our water system. I think when it comes to wastewater is where it becomes, because that, if you look at what we had to do to the EPA, we had a hundred and fifty million in water, six hundred million wastewater. And so I think that's where, you know, I think some of the angst comes from. We're trying to be the number one water, I know we're, we're almost there. We want to be number one.
So our study approach is a three step approach where we identify what the size of the pie, what the requirement is, the cost of services, who generates that cost? And the third step is the rate design that says, how do we price the service? So we've highlighted some areas of focus that we will look on as we execute this project. Um, from a financial planning perspective, we look at the integrity of the financial system through our financial metrics. We'll try to understand how we're doing as it relates to implementing our capital program. Uh, and we'll look at, you know, the water and wastewater utility, you know, what it means for your entity to be self sufficient. Additionally, we'll look at what's the cost to provide the existing services you do? And what's the cost to provide services to potential large use customers that are under consideration, okay? And then in, in looking at your cost of service, what does it cost to provide your miscellaneous fees? Your turnoff fees and other, you know, other general fees, you know, that you currently have, you know? Is your, how does your expansion fee compare to other utilities? So we'll be coming back to you with all that information. Uh, and then on the rate design side, we'll just look at what's the price of the services, you know, you, you, you provide? And is the price and your current rates appropriate? You know, how do you, again, how do we intend to price that mega user or large user? You know, and how do you look at its impact on development? Do you look at potentially some type of a development fund? You know, there, there are different things, you know, you can do as it relates to addressing this mega user or large user issue or opportunity that's currently on the table. So next steps. Uh, we are in the process of collecting data, um, we are going to be facilitating meetings with staff, to go over the project schedule, deliverables, the data we require, uh, and then we'll get going. Okay, that's it, thank you also very much.
Thank you, Robert.
And there were no questions for Robert?
We did it no longer.
I will, you see, Robert is part of the family.
It's about three to four months and it's going to be in alignment with the project schedule, the approvals and so we'll be coming back right this day in alignment with the project schedule.
Thanks, Robert. All right, so we're at four thirty six. I think we can go get it all done if you all don't mind staying in the same flat in this room, that way we don't hold for the first couple of.
Brennan? This Matt, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney client privilege pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. Convention Center, receipt of legal advice pertaining to, and pertaining, impending threatened or potential claim pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. L J versus C O C, State versus C O C, discussion of negotiation aspect. To propose contractual arrangement pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. Underwriters, twenty two twenty one Divine Street, Municipal Complex, special master related to proposed location or expansion of services to encourage location or expansion of industries or other business pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight two Park Street project.
That's it, second. That's, that's, is there a question for Robert?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Guevar?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mary Lynn?
Aye.